Thursday, October 3rd, 2024, regular meeting of the Hendersonville City Council. We begin our meeting with a silent invocation for people to prayer meditate as they choose, followed by the pledge of allegiance. And please remember our whole community, all those who are in need of assistance, have lost their homes, have lost family members, and for strength for everyone here in the community. Please rise. Thank you. You'll join me in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May be seated. We start with public comment time. The only person who has signed up is Ken Fitch. I hope you won't take the whole 15 minutes, but you do have a little more time than normal.
Okay. Ken Fitch, 1046 Patton Street. We in the public wish to thank everyone on the scene and behind the scenes for everything they have been doing during this unprecedented crisis. A special shout out to the fire department, Public Works, police, and water and sewer, whose constant interactive presence has provided much needed reassurance. And the new fire station has been a beacon of hope in a dark time. Yes, we see that the new fire station has proven its worth many times over as the essential location for gatherings, briefings, and strategy sessions. And throughout the city, there have been collective and individual unforgettable moments of assistance during this time. When a group of us were trying to open an emergency path out of our downed tree-blocked neighborhood to assist someone who was ill, we were equipped with chainsaws, clippers, and rakes, but then all of a sudden, there was Captain Womack and his fire team to assist with heavy tools. Many a day, we would see that master of emergency arboreal extrication, Alan Cliff, with his brush truck working way after sundown. He was on his way just as we're coming to this meeting. And yes, a simple thing like a police car stationed at five points with its lights flashing managed to bring some quiet order and patience to the growing line of traffic. And then yesterday, when we saw Dion jump off the recycling truck, we knew that things might be getting back to normal. And certainly, an MVP recognition of the highest order must be conveyed to whoever made the decision for the power outlets on Main Street that for hundreds of residents have been a lifeline as the only source of power for charging their phones. Some say, oh, the outlets were installed for Christmas lights. Well, we have been having 12 days of Christmas. And we must commend the few local restaurants who, on that first disastrous day, were open and like Mezzaluna, Papa John's, and the Indian Restaurant were offering free food. But then it has been First Baptist Church, and so many other churches, organizations, businesses, and individuals who have been providing necessary food, water, and supplies daily. And once again, we witness and experience the importance of neighborhoods where so much positive interaction has occurred. We welcome this important meeting because there has been one major issue of concern. The communications breakdown has been and continues to be a problem. Going forward, how do we receive official information when technology fails with unstable phone service and no internet? And some of us can only get Ash for their distant radio stations, but not WHKP or TZQ. So someone in the neighborhood was excited because they heard Bill Moss on TZQ. So we hope the situation can be remedied, but we are grateful for this meeting, this important meeting, and its broadcast. So one immediate question, for example, that would come up. Do we remain on a boil water advisory or not? And where would information like that be available going forward? A physical posting might be an additional asset at a central location. Well, we are sure Allison will come up with some solution, but it remains a concern. In the end, it all comes down to the strength of our community, the people who live and work here, and together we can go forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Fitch. We appreciate the kind words, and I know the staff does too. Consideration of the agenda, is there anything anyone would like removed from or added to this evening's agenda?
Mayor Bolt, I would like to remove two items from the agenda. Item nine A, the grant. We will be pursuing, but they've extended the grant deadline to end of November, so we have time to bring that back. Also, would like to remove the closed session, item number 12. We'll do that at your November meeting.
All right. Council, anything you have? If not, a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Madam Mayor, I move that City Council approve the agenda as amended.
Is there any discussion? Not those in favor of approving the agenda as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Ayes have it, motion carries, and the agenda is approved. Consent agenda, is there anything anyone would like to have moved from the consent agenda to the regular agenda so it can be discussed? Or not a motion to approve?
Madam Mayor, I move that City Council approve the consent agenda as presented.
Is there any discussion? Not those in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Ayes have it, motion carries, and we have that. We do have several presentations and proclamations this evening. I'm going to come around, and other than one, I know for sure is here, I will ask for the others to come forward. Got to move around. I really will tighten up. So the first is American Pharmacists Month. Do we have someone here for that? Okay. All right, well, this is to proclaim the month of October as American Pharmacists Month since we do have a pharmacy school here in Hendersonville. So I will, we will get that one to them. Fire prevention, who's going to take the fire prevention one? All right. Come in the middle. All right, so this is fire prevention proclamation, whereas the city of Hendersonville, North Carolina is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting Hendersonville. And whereas fire is a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, and homes are the locations where people are at greatest risk from fire. And whereas home fires caused 2,840 civilian deaths in the United States in 1921, according to the National Fire Protection Association, and fire departments in the United States responded to 353,500 home fires. And whereas smoke alarms sense smoke well before you can, alerting you to danger in the event of fire in which you may have as little as two minutes to escape safely. And whereas working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying by reporting home, reported home fires in half. And whereas the city of Hendersonville residents should be sure everyone in the home understands the sounds of the smoke alarms and knows how to respond. And whereas the city of Hendersonville residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire. And whereas the city of Hendersonville residents will make sure their smoke and carbon monoxide alarms meet the needs of all their family members, including those with sensory or physical disabilities. And whereas the city of Hendersonville first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education. And whereas the city of Hendersonville residents that are responsible, responsive to public education measures are better able to take personal steps to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes. And whereas the 2024 Fire Prevention Week theme, Smoke Alarms Make Them Work For You, effectively serves to remind the city of Hendersonville it is important to have a home fire escape plan. Now therefore, I Barbara Jeeple, Mayor of the City of Hendersonville, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim October 6th to 12th, 2024, as Fire Prevention Week throughout this city, and I urge all the people of Hendersonville to plan and practice a home fire escape for Fire Prevention Week 2024, and to support the many public safety activities and efforts of the city of Hendersonville's fire and emergency services. So. All right. Want to say anything?
Sure.
Right again.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, council members, and thank you, guests and city officials that are here today. This smoke alarm thing is more prevalent now, right? Power's starting to come back on. This is going to be the time when we're going to want to make sure that those smoke detectors are working, okay? Because we don't know what's going to happen. We don't know what happened to our homes while the power was out. Some of them flooded, some of them got water into them. So we want to make sure that we go home and, no more than anything, just test them, make sure that they're working, okay? Also, make sure that you're working on those escape plans, because you never know when the fire's going to happen and you need to get out. You want to make sure everybody goes to the same place, all right? So thank you, and please be safe.
Thank you. All right, next is Grease Buster's Day. Who's getting this one? Must have a city employee here to take this one.
So I'm going to ask our operations chief, Lou Holloway, if he ever seen it. Since I'm sure the utility folks are doing a few more important things, but.
All right, this is fighting Hendersonville's most wanted fats, oils, grease, and wipes. Whereas clean water is our most.
He was trying to see your spotlight.
Right on time, Adam, right on time.
Talk about time. All right. Whereas clean water is our most valuable natural resource, which we only can appreciate more after the past week. Whereas fats, oils, and grease, fog, pollution discharge poses a serious risk to the integrity of our water systems, interferes with the ability to properly clean polluted waters. Whereas proper treatment of polluted waters is essential for public health and welfare, as well as a healthy natural environment. And whereas the hard work performed by the entire water sector, surveying and repairing buried pipes, operators ensuring the safety and protection of the natural environment in which we all live, and ensuring compliance with pollution control requirements. And whereas fog buildup, along with wipes in a collection system, is a significant cause of sanitary sewer overflows. And whereas we are all stewards of the water infrastructure upon which current and future generations depend. And whereas the citizens of our city are called upon to help protect our critical water infrastructure by limiting the amount of fog discharged into our water systems. Now therefore, I Barbara Vol, Mayor of the City of Hendersonville, do hereby proclaim October 24th, 2024 to be Grease Buster's Day within the city of Hendersonville.
Water hero.
Okay, thank you. And finally, for this evening, Duchenne muscular dystrophy awareness. Can all come up, everyone?
Oh.
Come on up. No, I couldn't come. Okay, yeah, come on. We want everyone up here. Okay. So whereas Duchenne muscular dystrophy, DMD, is a genetic disorder characterized by progressive muscle degeneration and weakness, predominantly affecting young boys and rarely girls, with an estimated incidence of one in every 3,500 male births worldwide. And whereas Duchenne muscular dystrophy, though a rare disease, significantly impacts the lives of individuals and families, placing physical, emotional, and financial burdens on those affected and their communities. And whereas significant advancement has been made in the research, treatment, and understanding of Duchenne muscular dystrophy, thanks to the efforts of medical professionals, scientists, and patient advocacy groups, yet there remains no cure for this devastating condition. And whereas raising public awareness about Duchenne muscular dystrophy is essential in fostering understanding, generating support for research initiatives, and promoting policies that assist individuals and families living with the disease. And whereas the strength, resilience, and determination of those living with Duchenne muscular dystrophy, their families and caregivers deserve our recognition and support as their efforts to raise awareness continue to inspire hope for a future where DMD is treatable and curable. And whereas during Duchenne muscular dystrophy awareness month, we stand united in our commitment to bring attention to this disorder and advocate for the well-being of all individuals impacted by DMD, ensuring that they have access to the resources, care, and opportunities they need to thrive. And whereas the JEP Foundation, a leading nonprofit organization, has been dedicated to increasing awareness, raising critical funds, and providing essential programs for individuals and families affected by Duchenne muscular dystrophy since its founding in 2001, working tirelessly to empower communities and improve the quality of life for those living with DMD through advocacy, research, and educational initiatives. Now therefore, I Barbara Vol, Mayor of the City of Hendersonville, do hereby proclaim September 24th as Duchenne muscular dystrophy awareness month in the city of Hendersonville, and call upon all citizens, community agencies, faith groups, medical facilities, elected leaders, and businesses to increase their participation in our efforts to support families, thereby supporting early childhood programs and preventing child abuse and strengthening communities in which we live. Thank you so much for bringing this to our attention, and who wants to hold this? You hold it. Hold that? All right. Can you say something?
I thank you all for being here this evening. I know it's a trying time for everybody right now. We just continue, we experienced a delay, a significantly delayed diagnosis, so we just continue to fight for, you know, newborn screening, accessibility, quality of life, and spread awareness through resources, programs, and services.
JEP Foundation.
They helped us obtain our accessible vehicle, so.
Thank you.
Thanks for being here. All of a sudden, thank you.
All of a sudden.
Don't get used to it.
All right, so thank you all for coming out for that. This is an important part of recognition of individuals and organizations in our community for what they do. Okay. So we are going to jump all the way down to number 10, city manager report.
Yes. Mayor Bolt, Minister of City Council, as I report out on item A. Randy, will you ask any of our staff who's sitting outside? Hopefully, it's not the whole team, but if it is the whole team, bring them in here. That's what I want.
Yeah.
I want them in here. Okay. So just item A, your contingency report for 2000, for September is included, as well as any budget adjustments, that is all included in your agenda pack for your information. We'll be glad to answer any questions following this meeting regarding that, so I want you to, you've got that as required. So as we get, prepare for the update, for our update, we discussed earlier in the week that maybe about whether we should have this meeting or not because of the, what our community is going through, but it quickly came to my mind and our team's mind that having this meeting is critical. Our community has not shut down, your government has not shut down. We've been working, and we needed to show the community that we're here. We need to show the community that we are going to return to normalcy, and that we're going to, we're going to get back to our daily lives, and it was important for us to have this meeting. As you can see, most of our team has been busy working. We all are, most of the week been dressed down, but Brian and I felt like this was, it was symbolic for us to be in coat and tie for this formal city council meeting, because this is the city government functioning like it should. So we felt like it would be appropriate for us to dress as it's, as it's a normal city council meeting, so that is how we approached. Brian's going to provide an update here regarding what we've experienced the last seven days. Today was day eight, so we started, and so Brian will provide an update. I'll have a few other comments, and then following that, we have two actions that we need as it relates to making some amendments to some policies so we can continue to function and recover from Hurricane Helene.
Thanks, John. While Allison's pulling that up, I just want to say thank you to everybody. Thanks to council, thanks to staff, our community, everyone's, everyone's been so patient and excellent with working together, and we've been doing a lot. And I also want to say thank you to my family for getting to safer grounds, and all of the public servant families, because they sacrifice a ton, so we can do what we do for the community, so. Hey, Nancy, come on in. We've got a couple seats. We've got one seat over here to fill. So I will cover the state of the city. We're going to talk about what's happened, our current position. I'm going to hand it over to John to talk about what's next a little bit and some silver linings. And be patient with me, I'm got a little stir crazy here. I've been operating in a 70 megabit file, and I couldn't figure out what was wrong with it today, and it's because it's 70 meg, that's too many pictures, it's not going to work well, so I finally got it working, which is nice, but I'm not my sharpest right now. So 108 years ago, about two months and 10 days, was the flood of 1916. July 3rd, 1916, the rain began and continued for 10 days, and then on July 15th, 10 inches of rain fell in less than 12 hours. And what happened after that, we found in some old minute books that were extremely difficult to read, especially on a little sleeve in the longhand here. So on July 17th, two days after the event, the city council convened a session, and in that session, they accomplished two items. They approved a water interconnect to the county, and they also approved a loan of $10,000 to begin repairs on streets and critical infrastructure like water and sewer lines. Then on August 3rd, they came back into session about 15 or so days later, and issued a bunch of things that were called authority to acts to building committees and water and sewer committees. Some of the things that you will hear from this speaker tonight kind of represent some of those things from back in 1916, giving us the flexibility and agility to respond to the community needs. They also instituted what probably was somewhat of a curfew. They put in penalties for folks who operated street vehicles at night on the roads, so they kept everybody home. And then on October 5th, the bottom left a copy of those minutes, much easier to read once it was transcribed. They got power to three critical facilities, the water reservoir, the fire station, and city hall, three critical facilities that are still in use today. So what's happened? I think we're all pretty aware, but I want to run through a couple pictures we've captured from the event. This is South Main Street. We kept picking different targets as our rising water was rising up in the EOC as our next thing to watch, and we started just running out of stuff to count, and I think that sign down there is about seven feet high to the bottom of the 176 highway sign.
So just, just one caveat, so this, we were watching this live during the storm, thanks to the efforts of the police department, and we have a few mobile cameras, and we had set this on the flagpole in Hunter Air Park so that we could watch the water rise, and we were watching this minute by minute as the water. We had lots of water from the initial rain, and it dropped down a little bit that day Fri, on Friday, but then it started coming back, and so, actually, that was Thursday, and, but this, it was, there used to be, there's a fire hydrant in that picture, you cannot see it. We watched that for a while, but then it, and there's a guardrail for the bridge there, you can barely see it on your left. We watched that as it disappeared that morning.
Thanks, John. So obviously, lots of flooding, lots of trees and power lines down, critical issues with our quality of life, our parks, critical issues with our utilities and infrastructure, lots of washouts across stormwater, water sewer roads, plenty of rescue, loss of lives and property. And many city assets were damaged. This is our operations center, for example, but some of those that weren't seen include our wastewater treatment plant, our Mills River intake, our French Broad intake, many different assets of the city have taken significant damage from the storm. So just some updates on current status. Before I jump in here, our staff have been absolutely top shelf throughout this, caring, compassionate individuals who are really the utmost top of their profession, and they have been rocking and rolling. These slides have like two or three bullet points on them, but it is just so much more than that, and we can't necessarily convey that all in this meeting tonight. Now I'm going to run through these. So our police, really, security of our critical infrastructure is one of the first steps, securing mutual aid so our community could, community could feel safe with the loss of power and water and security. Traffic control plans, I'm sure everyone, not everyone in here went and panicked, bought gas and things as it started to open up, but I know many of us did. It's been a very scary time, and our police have been out there assisting the public in making sure when we're trying to secure our families and our homes and our property that, that we feel safe doing it. And they're, they're lining up plans for long-term mutual aid, because we know this is a long process, and we're just starting this journey. Our fire department has out been doing welfare checks, search and rescue, swift water rescue, salvage and support of people's homes that might be damaged to a point where it becomes a life safety issue, securing vacant buildings and utilities so when we do restore power and restore water and gas and these things, that we don't have critical incidents that further threaten the loss of property and life, and in helping in clearing trees in our community. Public Works have been working around the clock with tree removal without power lines. We've really want to get after the ones with the power lines, obviously, but they've been doing what they can in a safe manner. They've been running solid waste routes, so I think they've completed three solid waste routes today. I don't know where Tom is. There he is. Yeah, we've got our third solid waste route completed today, so that's awesome. Doing road clearing, clearing the greenways, trying to bring a sense of normalcy back, and locating sites for debris removal. Doing road clearing, clearing the greenways, trying to bring a sense of normalcy back and, and locating sites for debris removal. And a huge one, water and sewer. Water is so critical and we are so lucky to have the staff and the infrastructure and the investments we've made over the years in this water system. The team just, these are just big things, they've done so much. The Mills River intake was critical. Out of the gate, that was our first priority item. They, they repaired that Mills River intake and got the plant fully functional to 12 million gallons a day. They've repaired major lines to start pressure, repressurizing the system. We've started noticing water sampling and we have, I think, 70% of our community is with fresh drinking water that you do not have to boil. 25% are with fresh drinking water, boil water advisory. And only 5% are without water right now and we're actively working on a, a fix for that, that 5% of our community. I can't say again, we are so lucky to have the staff we do and the system we do. We are gonna be key for the recovery of Western North Carolina. And then lastly, we're working on the wastewater treatment plant. We've, we've got the water in place mostly and we're focusing our efforts now to wastewater. And we have a proposed temporary fix for that and we'll have more updates on that in the future. Technology has been great, Jay Heatherly has been a freaking rock star. This was my computer today, I had 914 megabytes of internet speed and I couldn't figure out why my power, my 70 meg PowerPoint with all the pictures was causing me the problem. I was beating my head against the wall. And so Jay has set up COWS, which is cellular on wheels. We have multiple different cows in the community over the, the course of this event so far. Starlinks have been a great asset, they have kept us up and running throughout this event. Communications have been very challenging for us. ERC, our main network, that is what you're seeing on the right, is predominantly repaired. We still have some facilities that aren't fully connected, but the majority of our facilities are connected to our gigabit internet. Our phones are up, our call center was stood up today. Jay stood up our EOC with the help of communications before the event started. And we've gotten radios to folks out there in the field. So technology support has been excellent for our staff. Also, planning and logistics, this includes finance, this includes community development, this includes legal, this includes all our staff down in the EOC, they, they have been rocking it. They, it's, we, none of us have ever done something like this before. Maybe outside of Chief Miller and Chief My Hand. And everyone has jumped in, leaned on their training, leaned on their professionalism and operate in EOC that I am extremely proud of, that has provided food, fuel, lodging, therapists and peer support for our employees, assisting employees who may not be available to come to work or who may be in very difficult situations and providing materials and supplies to our operational departments so they can operate every day. Some of my favorite moments of the day, even though I'm absolutely spent our dinners at the fire station, seeing everybody out there really just moved me. So what's next? I'm gonna turn it over to John, but we're really gonna move into recovery assessment and assistance now that we've moved out of our current phase.
Stay up here, stay up here. I just, yeah, I guess you sit right there. I can't say enough about the job that Brian's done to keep our EOC running. He has, he has been, he's been the main cog.
Would you just define EOC?
Oh, sorry, okay, sorry, thank you, Mary. Emergency Operations Center. And one thing, you know, Brian mentioned facilities. There's a couple of things I want to say about facilities. I want to thank this board and past boards' willingness to invest in us. I probably will get pretty emotional about it, but you invested in us, you invested in a facility. Just two weeks ago, tomorrow, right, was it two weeks ago? Tomorrow, we uncoupled a hose on Fire Station 1. And we had no idea would we put it in use like we have. That facility has served this community well and it's only two weeks old. I mean, it's a little longer than that, but officially only two weeks old. We have turned that facility into a second home for many of us. We were able to operate our emergency operations center out of the, out of their training room in the administrative wing. And we were able to do it in a way, many of us slept there beginning Thursday, or Thursday night into Friday when the first, that's how we were watching the video real time, because we were there in the emergency operations center. And we slept there, spent time there, had our meals there. And then fire operations continue to happen on their residential side. So it has worked well, we've been having meals in the, in the bays. But thanks to the team that designed that building, Fire Department, thank you, Chief Miller. The design of that building, the construction of that building has served us well over the last eight days. Thanks to leadership in our public safety departments. We've all go through emergency incident command system training. We do that online and in some classes. Boy, did we get additional training over the last eight days. Many days I'd see Chief Miller over there on the whiteboard giving us, giving some of us an additional lesson on what it really meant. And so we put the incident command system to work and it does work, works very well. And Brian has served as, as the daily operations chief, deputy incident commander when I've been running around dealing with community stuff, he's been making it work. So thank you very much. So what's next? Well, we, we are through the rescue and response phase, we are moving into recovery. This is gonna be a marathon for the public, so we are really moving. Recovery has begun with the returning of water services, starting to cleaning up debris, getting our government back operating normally. So we're starting that process, we're well on our way to doing that. The next phase will be, and let me see, Brian, do you have different slides? Okay, I'll go back here. Following the, you know, as we continue recovery, you'll start seeing teams out doing assessment. We still have lots of damaged buildings and properties that will have to be assessed to see if they're safe for people to reoccupy. That is, we will partner with Henderson County to do that with their building inspection. Our code enforcement folks will be out and about to assess damage. We're also assessing our facilities, as Brian showed you. The operations center, wastewater treatment plant, intakes, countless pump stations will have to be assessed to make sure they are safely operational. And we'll, we're in the process of doing that. Steve Iverson, our risk manager, is already in contact with our insurance company. And they are, they have been here or they will be here. And we're already getting back into place. The operations center, we've already started demo there to remove sheet rock and carpet and stuff from that. And then finally, assistance. The assistant process through the federal government is gonna be a long, arduous process. It is, it is also starting. FEMA is, is just now getting here. We all, we've said for years, as we, as people talk to us about recovery and natural disasters, that local communities are typically, we're on our own for the first seven days, we have been on our own. Maybe a couple more days, but FEMA will be arriving, they will be setting up, thank you. Thank you, Andrew.
Rock star.
Yeah, the whole team, goodness. They've been setting up, they'll be setting up public assistance for, for local governments for us to, to help fill in the gap where our insurance doesn't cover things, to get infrastructure and facilities back. But they'll also be setting up locations for community assistance where our citizens will be able to, to try to fill the gaps with their own private insurance and needs where they have, find, those of us, community that's lost housing. The county will be working with FEMA to provide housing to those folks who, who've lost their homes. And we'll start with temporary housing and, and then ultimately work toward permanent housing. But that will be, it will, I just want to let the community know it will be a long process. I've been involved in this in, in other situations in my career and, and it's, it's a long process. We just ask for your patience and as your local government, we will do everything to help facilitate that. But just, just bear with us, I'm gonna bear with the federal government. And all of this will be out of our hands. We'll be dealing with, with FEMA, Federal Emergency Management Agency and they'll have their rules and policies and forums and so. But we'll, we'll get it started and we'll move on. So that is what's next. Debris management as part of the recovery will be huge. You'll see lots of debris, construction debris as well as vegetative debris. We already are scheduling other municipalities to come help us. We'll have multiple crews getting the debris up, the green waste, and then ultimately find a contractor to get the construction waste. So, but that may stay out a little longer than everybody wants it to, but we'll get it. So that's what's next, that's where we're moving. Recovery, assessment and assistance. So I want to talk a little bit about what we've done the last 10 years. And I mentioned the Fire Department a minute ago. We, we have been, we didn't know it, but we've been preparing, we've been preparing for, for this disaster for almost 100 years. And really, and we've really been focusing on it the last 10 years. But this has been the city preparing for, for this historical event. Mr. Fitch, I think you saw our presentation earlier when you mentioned the, the main street. Our downtown infrastructure, I mean, downtown became a safe haven. They set for a brief few minutes yesterday where everybody was a little scared. But other than that, thanks for the response, Chief. But the downtown has been a safe haven, been a place where people can go and charge their phones, have coffee. I understand there was folks making coffee out there and, and passing it out. So it really became the community's living room and, and that's what we wanted to be, right? That's what City Council wanted, wanted to be the heart of the community, so that, that occurred. I mentioned the fire station, but also, you know, the investment in the police department. We were able to have a, a safe place for our law enforcement officers to, to work out of, to shower, to wash clothes and our communications. We, we skipped a beat a little bit, Chief, but it wasn't our, it was an outside thing, but our folks were there 24/7, taking care of our law enforcement officers. Parking deck was used, we were able to open it, allow people to, that were downtown to use it. Our restrooms were available to provide shelter and, and places for the community. And then, and then finally, the investment, your number one investment has been our staff. And I thank you for investing in City Council and our staff. I've never worked with a more professional, more knowledgeable, more dedicated team. And it's, you see what they do here. And we also, you need to know that they have strong professional networks across the state and nation. And you would not believe what this team did. I mean, the, the reason we've been able to get where we are so quickly is we've been able to pick up the phone and call our peers and our friends and say, hey, can you come help us? Or how would you do this? Or, I mean, whether it's Chief My Hand, Chief Miller, Tom, any of us, we, we have built, I mean, we've been building networks through professional organizations and we, that has come to pay us forward because those folks, I mean, we all are getting calls daily, how can we help? How can we come to Hendersonville? You've helped us, we want to come help you. And, and I mean, today I've got four managers willing to send five knuckle boom trucks to come help, to help Tom pick up green vegetation. That, your investment in our staff and our ability to be part of a professional organizations in this state and in this nation is so valuable and I just want to say thank you from the bottom of my heart and what you've invested in us. So I just, I just need to say that. Also, continuing on, investments that we didn't know we were gonna need. And I'm gonna get the, the one in the middle right there in just a second. But you know, the investment in the water treatment plant pumps, we, we've upgraded high-service pumps, allowed our staff to, to get that 10 million gallons of water out of the plant into the system quickly. That, that's their investment in Northside in Etowah. You should know that Etowah never lost water, they never lost water. Those folks were continuously in water. Your investment in Northside, while we had some damage there, that investment will pay its way forward as we go. The Uward Hill Reservoir, I was out last night with Ricky Levi, our water plant operator, and that, those reservoirs were initially constructed in the 1920s. There are two 5 million, those of you don't know, there's two 5 million gallon reservoirs on top of Uward Hill, which is, you go up Westlake just above 3rd and 4th avenues up there, there's two, there's two, there's two, it looks like two metal buildings. And those were constructed just a vision of our community in the 1920s to build those five, two 5 million gallons. You've got 10 million gallons of water in those facilities. And we filled them up right before the storm. And, and up until about Adam, a year ago, two years ago, two or three, one of those, the, you see the picture there, one of the reservoirs had a leak and we had taken it offline for, for a number of, for a number of years. And we, Ricky kept beating the drum to get it fixed, to get it fixed. And your city manager, the budget guy says, do we really need 10 million on that hill? Do we really? I mean, we've got it all in us, so. But finally he beat the drum loud enough that we decided we better fix it. So we still have 5 million gallons, which is a large, a large body of water, but we fixed it two or three years ago. If he had not done that, if he had not pushed the utilities department, pushed me, pushed the budget team to fix that, and I think Adam was probably very instrumental in pushing us to fix that, we probably would have run out of water the first night when we, when we had the leaks, when all the lines broke. Because we, like I said, we had 10 million, but imagine if we'd had half of that. And so hopefully Ricky will hear this, I told him last night, thanks for beating the drum. And that's just our team. I mean, we had 10 million gallons of water, we've got 10 million gallons there and it's serving the community. So great investment by the council to do that and, and great team members to, to push us when we need to be pushed. The mountain water sources, we never lost water coming out of the, out of the Pisgah Forest. It was 40% of our, but we kept, we kept water coming. And we were able to get, and then we got the Mills River back on. Staff offices, City Hall, just your investment, safe places for our folks. So we've been prepared a long time, didn't know it, but thank you for your investment. We're not perfect, we got, we, we've got things to do. But our proactive and the council's proactive investment in the redundancy and forethought has allowed us to recover. We are gonna be an oasis, we are already becoming an oasis, but we are an oasis for this region. It will bring its own challenges over the next few days, few months. But because of what the leadership of this council and previous councils, we will be the oasis. We will recover faster, we will recover better because of you and because of our team. And I just want to say. And I want to end on a couple of positives, positive pictures here in just a minute. And then Angie's got a couple of resolutions and proclamation, resolutions or forms. Anyway, I'll give that to you in a minute. Hey, so you know, we're still here, right? You know, these, these are pictures after the storm. I think this is just, symbolizes our team and our connection to the community. Our firefighters out doing, out doing that salvage work, getting things back to normal for our citizens. You know, Matt Capps visiting with a resident who needs some help. We had, just making sure, checking on them, doing welfare checks, making sure they're okay. And drum roll, everybody ready, y'all ready for this? We got free putt putt. Saturday, Saturday and Sunday, we're gonna open up the Mini Golf. It's in good shape, we gotta blow the leaves off, but it's in, we're gonna open up the Mini Golf for free. We've got some volunteers running it. This is Brian's brainchild, I have to give him credit for it. But we're gonna put the putters out there and the golf balls and just invite the community. I'm hoping it's gonna be a beautiful sunny day, Saturday and Sunday, but we're gonna open up for the community and just invite people to come out, be with their friends, friends and family, be with the community. Enjoy the new Mini Golf, which was another investment that we opened in almost a year ago, right? A year ago this month, October, so we're ready to go. So, so that is our report, that is where we are. Angie has a couple items. If you do want to make donations on the screen, there is that information through Henderson County. And Angie, I'll turn that over to you. And thanks to the folks standing behind me, we couldn't have done it.
Thank you. Before I get into my items, I just want to say
Thank you. Before I get into my items, I just want to say we owe a large debt of gratitude to that man right there. I've worked with a lot of managers and he's the best. He's so professional. He's a leader. He's selfless. And we would be remiss if we didn't mention that man. So, I have a couple things in talking with department heads and city manager, assistant city manager, who I've really enjoyed getting to work with you a lot closer this week. Anyway, some things that will help us to be able to address things that come up now and between the next time you guys meet, the next time, and in future states of emergency. So, we're considering this part of the update. We're going to update a few policies if city council is willing. The first is an ordinance to amend the city code to allow city manager to suspend our disconnection policy. It says, it's the ordinance one. And what it does is it allows him to suspend the disconnection policy because our bills are going to be going out and people aren't going to have the money to pay and late fees for non-payment. You all, as city council, have enacted this policy before. This allows your city manager to do it in a state of emergency. And then also as part of that, as we roll forward and make repairs in the water and sewer system, we need to make sure that, while this might not be a popular thing to do, but in making some repairs, it might be necessary to temporarily disconnect some businesses or homes or whatever. So it gives them the authority to do that and then restore service as soon as they can, as soon as the repair is done. So that is the ordinance. That, those are the two things that ordinance accomplishes. It is, you can adopt that this evening and we do have a motion. Madam Mayor, would you like to consider these one at a time or?
Yes, let's go ahead. Okay. The one that the speaker has been talking about is actually the second motion listed regarding section 5251. If someone would like to approve that.
Madam Mayor, I move city council adopting ordinance of the city of Hendersonville City Council to amend section 51-51 of the code of ordinance for the city of Hendersonville as presented or as amended.
Is there any discussion? Not. Those in favor of amending section 5251, say aye.
Aye.
Does opposed say no? Ayes have it. That one's been taken care of.
Thank you. The second is a resolution to update and amend some administrative policies that we have in place. And so if I could just briefly go through those, the first is the leak adjustment policy. We know that with the storm, some people's water systems are going to leak and their meters are going to run and they're going to get a huge bill. And so, this, we know that's happened now and in other states of emergency, it can happen as well. So, this first amendment allows a city manager to implement temporary leak adjustment policies in a state of emergency without having to come back to city council. That's only in a state of emergency. When it's due to a state of emergency. The second is part of our, I'm sorry, are there any questions about the leak adjustment? Okay. The second is an inclement weather policy. And I do echo the city manager and what he said in thanking city council for taking care of your employees. It truly is, it's just a blessing to work for a council that values its employees like you all do. This, so the second one though is part of that policy and philosophy. You all had the forethought several years ago to allow exempt employees to be paid when they have to go over and above. So exempt employees, as you know, are salaried and no matter how many hours they work, they get a salary. And as part of the state of emergency, we have people that have been working 15-hour days, 12-hour days, exempt employees. And so, you all put in your policy that exempt employees during a state of emergency like this could be paid time and a half overtime, just like hourly employees. And by having that in your policy, it will allow us to apply to FEMA to allow FEMA to reimburse the city for those overtime hours to the same percentage that they reimburse for other things. And it's a way to recognize your exempt employees for going above and beyond their normal duties. But the policy left out, I think I'm on the wrong one.
Yeah, it's number four.
It's number four. Okay, sorry. Can you talk to number four? The policy left out department heads. And so, Brian came to me and said, "Can we take a look at that? And can we take a look at it so we can reward department heads?" And then we had a little management team meeting. And so, they asked me to propose an amendment that, actually, city manager has some administrative authority, but you all need to ratify it, to allow department heads to be paid the same time and a half as well. And so, I bring that before you, but, so if you'll notice, the amendment excludes the city manager. So, what this would do would be to allow all exempt employees, department heads, to get overtime except the city manager. So, anyway, so that's an administrative amendment that we will be asking you to adopt. Do y'all have any questions about that?
I would like us to include the city manager, if everyone is okay with that, because he doesn't get to tell us what to do.
I think he deserves it and I think it would be ridiculous for us to leave him out.
Okay.
And we know who left it out.
Yes, we do, we do. Okay, so then, as far as where you, if you look down and you see where it says excluding city manager, we'll just put a line through that too. And so then, if, when you make the motion to adopt the resolution, you can say as amended. Okay. Going back to the other administrative policies, the authority to open and close facilities has been expanded in number two, back in the inclement weather policy. Right now, it says city manager can close the city facilities, but we are learning that we might want to do a partial closing or a partial opening. We might want to have normal operations in one place and have another place closed. We've also learned that there are a lot of personnel who are stranded and are not going to be able to make it into work. So Brian, Brian came to me and he said, "Is there a way that we could help and take care of those employees?" So, if I could just go through this one, because it's a little bit more involved, but it, it says that the city manager, in addition to the power that he has just to close everything down, he can close any city facility, suspend any city services regardless of whether normal city operations. In other words, this allows him to do part and not all. To open or partially open any city facility for emergency operations and services, to partially open or partially close for normal operations. And this is the new one, number four really, to provide inclement weather pay to any essential or non-essential personnel who are unable to report, to work for their scheduled shift due to legitimate impacts of the declared state of emergency. And so, if we have employees that live in, like, that might live in, say, Buncombe County that is under a state of emergency and can't get in, he would be able to do that for them as well. And then last, contract management policy. This extends the authority of the city manager when we are under a state of emergency to enter into contracts that he normally cannot enter into. Once that state law would require to be brought to you all, would be, still have to be brought back to you for ratification. But it will, it would allow us to make repairs, significant repairs, or do other emergency operations that we need in between city council meetings during a state of emergency.
We can give you two good examples. We're going to be spending a lot of money to get the wastewater plant back online and waiting 30 days is not what we want to be doing. And also, we've got a water line in the Hoopers Creek region that's going to, we're going to spend a significant amount of money to get water. And this would just allow us to keep rolling. And ultimately, these large contracts would come back to you for ratification so you know what we've done.
And I do want to point out that because some of those might be beyond authority that, and I have that he has to consult with me before he does that.
You know if I get it by her.
But that you all would hold us harmless if we have to make decisions in times like that, that, you know, the city wouldn't come back and sue us for having to make a decision like that. And that's it. So, are there any questions about the rest of any of that? Okay, so there is a motion that a clerk has prepared. And since you did make that amendment, if you could include that as amended instead of as presented.
Madam Mayor, I'm in the city council, adopt a resolution by the city of Hendersonville City Council to provide amendments to certain administrative policies during federally state and locally declared states of emergency as amended.
Is there any discussion? Those in favor of the resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Does opposed say no? Ayes have it. Motion carried and we have amended those administrative policies.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, while she's sitting out, while Angie's sitting out, just say it's been nice. Angie has been there the whole time with us and it's nice to have your attorney sitting in the room when we're asking questions about FEMA and getting, I mean, getting contracts. I mean, we, we were able to get a contractor in here, start removing debris and cut trees. And Angie's right there writing the contract as well. So, just thank you.
All right, city council. Say anything?
Sure, I'll say something.
All right.
It's been amazing to get to sit and watch what happened. Not always sitting, have the opportunity to go out and help. But John and Brian, the team you guys have put together is flipping awesome. To watch how smooth it operates and how it problem solves and how John and Brian can work together. They each have their specialties and can take a meeting in. Bottom line is, in my life, and I've lived a long time now, I've never had the opportunity to make an investment in anything that's paid back like this has. Good stuff.
Yeah, I am beyond impressed with the team that we have here. Like, there is no one that can question any of the staff's or council's dedication to the city and its residents because it was a tough week for everybody. It was a tough week for all of our staff members and all of our residents and we all had damage to our homes and loved ones that we were trying to get ahold of. And not only were they managing their personal effects, they were also managing everything for the residents and they were doing it with a smile on their face for the most part. When we weren't smiling, we were usually crying or cracking up like the Mad Hatter or, you know, just leaning on each other. And I really could not be more proud of all of you guys. And I'm going to stop talking because I've held it together this far and I'm going to keep going.
Just thanks from council and thanks from all the residents. I've been taking some phone calls and answering whatever questions people have. And then it's, thank you for the work that you are doing.
Yes.
Many, many of the people who called, closed the calls with thank you. So, I will pass that on.
And everybody just be civil, be kind, help each other. Just treat your neighbors right.
I can truly say that the city of Hendersonville is just like a palm tree. We bend, but we bounce back.
That's right.
So, we hinder strong.
That's right.
We hinder strong.
And I do think that we should give a standing ovation for our employees because like, it was not enough.
With that, we are at your. Thank you all.
I just want to say for the public, this council's been out in the community working hard. I mean, everything we asked, they were there to help. It's been all a team effort. So, I want to, I just want to make sure everybody knew that, that the entire city council was, and our staff is senior, so, and it's in the community. In fact, the mayor sat in a call center for 12 hours.
Long time.
And I don't think she would have left unless, until, unless they made her because they were close.
I had to make her leave. I had to make her leave. And FEMA did show up at the county call center today. We got a big, there were people running through the halls. FEMA's here.